Good evening, the Pope, prayers, bag of hands. Please God be with us today and help all that we say, our words, and our actions, our deeds, during the betterment of our district. He pleads it to you and bring glory to you in Jesus' name we pray, amen. Mary, the flag. Salute, pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas?
Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one safe under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. All right, thanks all for getting these here today. Because I still think nobody signed up his feet, right? Nobody signed up his feet. All right, so we can start off on number four.
Okay, this is Board Appreciation Month, and many districts celebrate the Board Appreciation Month in January, since our election during November, ours has moved to May. So we have some folks here that want to address the board and just tell them how much they appreciate it. Number one, the red bag there is from me, and if it doesn't fit, just let me know and I'll sort it out.
Yes.
But now, we appreciate all of you and what you did. Let's start off, I guess, with the high school.
Okay, we got a group from Ag today that's going to present a toast of appreciation to you. These were made in the Ag department. All of these students have had a tremendous year this year.
The belt buckle.
Thank you. We certainly appreciate all of you for our efforts, especially the Department of the Department of Education, so thanks for everything that you've done for not only the high schools, but this group, it's gonna be a lot of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. They're done. They're gone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You will? She said mom was there, I'm stuck.
Okay, Mr. Menor.
President of Middle School, Student Council.
All right.
President.
For members, the Sevigny Middle School Student Council would like to personally thank you for your leadership, hard work, devotion, effort, and sacrifice you put into making Sevigny an easy, a great school district. Thank you for helping us on our road to success. Please accept this gift as a token of our appreciation.
For those of you who don't know, our board president is Kevin Moos.
Thank you.
Thank you. Always a good thing. Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And elementary schools.
So we have the little plaque, it's the apple of Sevigny Elementary's eye, and we brought the yearbook for y'all. It is just a mixture of the kids. Tony, I don't know if you found yours yet, but he's on there somewhere. I know that when we all work together, we have great things that happen for our kids, and I appreciate your dedication and your commitment, and we will strive to get better, and we're doing a great job at educating our kids with y'all's help, and I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, it's not just one night a year, but we are appreciated more than that. So we know you give up your time with your family and other things that you could be doing to come up here and make a difference with your kids, so we appreciate everything y'all do, and just appreciate you being willing to, because that means a lot. Okay, we will move on now to student successes, and really, I want to recognize the high school, because we had some very unusual, outstanding successes there since our last board meeting. So if you could, Mr. Shaw, if you could address that?
We took Ag students to state. We had four seniors, candidates, in accounting, keeping showing current issue events. Devin Thompson in number sense calculator in math, Carly Sheets in calculator in math, Jeff Thompson in math, Armando Arago in number sense, Teddy Taylor, number sense calculator in math, and our only sophomore, Scotty Taylor, number sense in calculator. Awards to the one, where Keaton Shelling was sixth place in current issues and events. Devin Thompson was state runner-up in math and third place in calculator. Carly Sheets was state runner-up in calculator. Jeff Thompson was fifth place in math. Teddy Taylor was the state champion in calculator. Remember last year, Devin Thompson was our state champion, so we've had the state champion in calculator in pre-18 the last two years. Scotty Taylor was fourth place in number sense and fifth place in calculator. The number sense team was second place, that was Scotty Taylor, Armando Arago, Teddy Taylor, and Devin Thompson. The calculator team repeated their state champion, it was Teddy Taylor, Carly Sheets, Devin Thompson, and Scotty Taylor. Math won the state championship this year. Their team was Devin Thompson, Jeff Thompson, Teddy Taylor, and Carly Sheets. Together, these kids collected 98 points and representing our school, which was the most points accumulated on that day by any pre-18. We are awaiting the results of the speaking events, which will be the 22nd and 23rd of this month. We have a 98 to 66 lead over Holliday. Holliday does have some speakers, we do not. Quail is in third, they have six members, and they also do not have any speakers. So it's going to come down to how Holliday, how their speakers do at state. I feel very confident that we will be in first or second. We're anxiously waiting for the 22nd and 23rd to get here. The kids have had a tremendous, tremendous year, started out in October, and it's continued all the way through. We had a phenomenal district meet, we finished in the top three at regional, and then to do this well at state, it's a compliment to our kids and our sponsors that have put in so many hours during school, after school, and on Saturdays, giving us a lot of Saturdays to go compete. So I'm very proud of them. They've shown that Sevigny is a very, very good place for kids to be, and they can compete with anyone out there. So thank you for all you do for them, and you know, if you see them, be sure and congratulate them. It's been a fantastic year for all of those kids.
So they won. So that one weekend, they won three state championships in academics and math. We had two teams that won the state championship, math and calculator, and one individual that won the state championship in calculator, correct?
Yes, I understand that's correct, and the number sense team was second in state. So three number one, and one runner-up.
That's pretty good.
Pretty good.
And right now, the standings for the overall state championship, right now, we're in first with 98 points, is that correct?
That is correct.
Second place team, Holliday, was 66 or so?
Six or six.
Two to three, quite okay. Okay. Very good. We're anxiously awaiting the 22nd and 23rd.
I don't know if this was in, we got the spring meet championship polls. If not, if not, I'll just be real quick. We won easily, we had 1,046 points, and the runner-up was Farmy with 409. And the spring meet is golf, tennis, and track, and the academics. So that's another thing that this group of kids did this year. I would like to just mention, the academics were also complemented by the tennis team, who won district for the first time in many years. They scored 110 points total, had several district champions. The golf team, the girls, won district, and they advanced to region, as well as to our young men on the boys' golf team, and they gave us 40 points, and then the track, boys and girls, combined for 45 points, so the total was 1,046, which I've gone back a long way, I cannot find another school that's had that many points for a spring meet championship. So again, this was a combination of athletic events in the spring and the academics. So there were a lot of kids that were involved, some of them in both, but I'm just, you know, I'm blessed to have a school that supports everything, academics, athletics, our Ag department, our Art Department, everybody did great value this year. Appreciate it all, stars, with you here in boarding. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Coach Shaw. Okay, anybody else? I know that none of the other principals want to follow that up.
Come on, that's what you got.
We primed those kids.
They kind of beat your school hard, excellent.
Yeah, so we'd like to mention that our baseball team just completed this season in playoffs versus a very good veteran team. Kids competed really hard, I was proud of them. Our softball team did play a seed game to get into the playoffs, and West Ruska beat us, but those young ladies played hard as well. I want to mention Adam Caldwell. Adam's going to be representing us in the state track and field meet this Saturday. He's a 110-meter hurdles, he's a two-time state qualifier, so we wish him the best. He's had a really good outstanding track season, running some of his best times of his career, so we're very proud of Adam Caldwell as well.
Thank you, Coach. Okay.
We have a few things on four D. Oh, we don't talk C, though. We got to go through C first. Anything we need to talk about over there?
Not anything unusual, except the fact we have two check registers instead of one because of the bank switch.
Because of the bank switch.
Well, we finally got our checks on Texas Banking Trust, and we're aware of our last check run of the month was actually on the new bank.
Okay. So D?
Okay, that's just a reminder of the events that are coming up, so everyone can remember. I know if you, you know, the ones that we, that the board members normally attend, I thank y'all pretty much to let us know if you weren't going to be able to attend the senior awards program.
You're saying these are optional?
Well, you know, we invite everybody, all of them, but yeah, the senior awards night, of course graduation night, those are big ones.
Dr. Mortchad, did y'all have guiding stars when you were on the board?
We did, actually.
You know what guiding stars is?
Yeah, I did, yeah, he's been in one. Well, I did one, maybe it was a...
I think Pat, because of Pat, so you know what we're talking about.
I do.
Dan, have you been in one? You don't need to miss guiding stars, just heads up.
Well, yeah, unfortunately, I'm going to be in conversation with hopefully my newborn grandson, who's...
Hopefully your newborn grandson?
That should be on do on the tent, and so it's kind of like...
No, I just, it's a pretty cool thing to be at.
It is, yeah.
Okay. And if you have any questions about any of these items, be sure and let me know, because I think the times listed on all of these activities are correct on here, so.
Okay, moving on to five A, consent items. Or, we just consent all of one. So A, B, and C, is there anything to be multiple items, consent items? Put these on, I can't see. What time do we need to bid graduation this year?
Starts at seven.
What time do we have?
Six fifteen. We usually get there about 45 minutes ahead of time.
We don't go backwards. Keep moving forward.
Just throwing that out there so nobody will...
Anybody who pointed they got a consent items, A, B, and C? If not, as are usual, we will approve those. All as one, can I get a motion? Dr. Mortchad, give a second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? unanimous? All right, discussion item, six eight.
Okay, on that, we are to the point to where, you know, I just need some direction from the board on moving forward with going ahead and asking for RFPs for demolition of the elementary school, the old elementary school. We, you know, the process, we kind of explained that in the memo, but we will advertise in the newspaper and, of course, online, and then the people that are interested will complete a packet of information to let us know what their bid will be, kind of like you do on all of the building process, but this is just a demo process. So basically, we're at that point with that building over there, if the board is ready to proceed, and I just kind of want some direction from y'all on that, if y'all are ready to move forward. You know, I mean, it's not an action, I just want to get some feedback.
For me, I'd say I'm absolutely ready. I think, well, I drove through Beckville today and noticed their old school, it's kind of head back off the main track, but it's an eyesore, and there's no cyclone bits around it, and all those things crumble down communities.
Well, I always had one here a while back that burned, been sitting for years and years and years, and finally just recently burned, so made it even worse, but it's still, the structure of the burnt building is still sitting there.
Now, it'll still be up to the board to accept the proposals, so...
Yeah, we've got nothing to lose moving forward.
Mr. Bryce, I just have a question. In the bids for the demolition, does that include any kind of, at least preliminary, put the dirt back to where it looks like a decent field, or is it just tear down and we have to come in and...
No, it will be the dirt working included, it will be a smooth surface to be ready to build on it, you know. We, previously, when we did that, that was part of the question too, but that's absolutely part of it is, they have to leave that thing leveled and ready to be built on.
For me, I don't know if it'd be ready to be built on, because we don't know what the elevations would be going forward, but...
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying...
Don't bury anything, and leave it in such a way, then we won't have runoff problems.
Yeah, and that's the biggest concern, I think, we all talk about.
I think all they said was it was actually going to be drainage ready.
Right, right.
It wouldn't give us any problems.
With pond water.
Right.
Yeah, and it's not going to have a foundation worth of problem. But... It will look like a nice little soccer field when they're done. Is that being vacation?
No, just a general grade, it's where it won't cool water, it won't cause stormwater issues.
Is that different than what we have at the elementary? The little soccer field off to the side?
Yeah, that's kind of crumbled already.
That's correct to a specified grade.
I'm not getting that much.
When I get done with that, it'll probably grow hay with it.
Yeah.
Make some money bailing hay off of it?
Whatever.
All right, so next item, well, do you have, do you have clear direction?
I do. I will move forward on that, and again, the board will take action on you with these things coming up. We're on B, repair item. Item B is discuss the repair of the fascia, the outside part of the building, a part that runs around, you know, needs to be...
It's called the mansard. The mansard? That fascia?
No.
Called a mansard.
Oh, yeah? Wow.
That fascia is called a mansard.
You call it fascia, and it's also called a...
It's a fasciamansard. Okay, but anyway, that needs attention, just so, you know, it, especially, I know y'all have noticed my brain, but it just looks bad, but anyway, the fascia that runs all the way around the high school building, all the way around here, and through here, even all the way in the back, back there, and we're talking about even underneath, you know, because when we had to replace some roofing over here, water damage was evident, so it's even replacing that part, so it's going to be a complete makeover on that, so...
So they're going to fix the stuff, or is...
Yes, yes.
I forget.
Yeah. So now, the other part of that, you know, the main reason to bring it to you is because there's already money in the budget. This board approved budget to do roof repairs at the elementary, and there is enough money left in that budget.
I said elementary.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't say that.
Yeah, there's enough money left in that budget to do this, so that's the big thing about it. So it will not require any budget amendment, I'm just saying. So I just want to notify y'all that that's what we...
We're using roof care money for roof care.
Yes.
Or...
Mansard.
Mansard. That's a new word.
I guess I heard it. It's a hard...
Now, I'll remember that. All right, we're on C. Okay, C, yes, looking at the budget workshop, way back when we looked at that, we put May the 15th for the first budget workshop. We're still going to need some more numbers, clear numbers, and it would be better if we could move that back to the 31st of May, because we'd have better information at that time, if that's good with y'all. And again, that's just the first budget workshop that we'll look at. And the reason I said 31st, that's really the first free evening after the 15th that there is. So what do y'all think about moving that, so we can have some more, some better concrete numbers at that point?
What time do you want to do it?
What time did we originally have that scheduled? Do you remember, Kevin? That's flexible.
It was the TBD.
Okay, that's the next to last day of school, early release day, just give everybody heads up.
Six. Six o'clock to be looking...
Wednesday night, I, Jurassic and I both teach, I prefer Wednesday nights, we don't know what else y'all got going on, but that's a Wednesday night. If we could do it earlier, I'm more apt to be able to do it, but at 6:30, I already...
Okay.
About? At 4:30. Will that give us enough time? About?
There's just the...
What are we going over?
Yeah.
How much are we going over on this one?
On the first one, it won't be tremendously detailed, but we want to go over estimated revenue, estimated payroll.
If we could do 4:30, and you get us out of here by six, then I'm good.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Does everybody call that, 4:30 to six?
Yeah.
Okay.
My 31st at 4:30. Okay, very good.
Mr. Bryce, can I just ask a quick question? Does anyone have any inkling as to, you know, I know the Texas Legislature is still in session, how there, there's a Senate budget, there's a House budget, and they still have to work that out, but are there feelers as for how education might be affected?
I don't think we're going to see anything major as far as impacting the budget. I think we're going to be sitting pretty close to where we were this year. The best, the best thing right now that I can see that could affect us would be them getting rid of the small school penalty, which, there is a bill that has a lot of promise as far as passing. That bill would eliminate that penalty, and it would help us a great deal. It would be phased in over a six, because it would be phased in over three sessions in six years. It would be a huge chunk of money if they tried to do it all at once, and there's no way they could do that, but it does have a good chance of passing, and that would help the district out of that one. But as far as anything major as far as reworking the finance system, they're not going to do that in this session.
All right, so next we go to action items, we're on seven eight.
Okay, Kevin, would you go?
This is a long time ago for us to recommend and approve, and ask the board to approve the engagement letter for annual audit for the year end of June 30th, 2017. The fee for this year is $1,200 more than it was last year, it's because of the additional testing that's going to be required because of the federal limits that are being raised. The rest of the engagement letter is pretty much the same as it usually is, because of their guidelines, and instead of a short engagement letter, it's about seven pages long. But our recommendation would be to the board to accept the engagement letter with Karen Jackson Associates for doing the audit of the school year ended June 30th, 2017.
Can I get a motion, next, your Kevin's recommendation? Dr. Mortchad, I got a second. Any conversation, discussion? All in favor? Posed? You okay? All right, next item, seven B.
Okay, Kevin, go ahead and take that. This is, this is talking about the bus that, if you remember back, we discussed purchasing three buses.
You got your B.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped one, didn't I? Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, Kevin, that one's yours.
That's the best. Part of the budget calendar that we presented back in February includes the dates for having a public meeting on the budget and the proposed budget for the budget and proposed tax rate for 2017 and 18. I'd like to suggest Monday, June 26th, as the date that we have that meeting. An alternate date will be the next day, June 27th. This will get us very close to the end of the month, allow my staff and myself to get as much of the budget adjusted as we can, and give the other entities that we deal with time to get us information in case they're last minute items that occur, or say that any SSA like it did last year has an impact on our budget. So my recommendations that we have, that we have to set the public hearing date for the budget and proposed tax rate for Monday, June 26th, in time, I guess, to determine whether...
Basically, Kevin's recommendation, have the hearing on the 26th. Can I get a motion?
Should we set a time in this motion?
Do if we want to.
Yeah, let's make it 6:30 exactly.
So 26th at 6:30? So can I get a motion for that?
Motion.
Paul has a motion, can I get a second? Patty has a second, any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? In unanimous? All right, next item.
Now, let's talk about this. We had looked at purchasing three buses, two regular buses and one smaller bus, and y'all approved funding for that, and when we went out to, to purchase the buses, ended up, the two regular passenger buses, they were, at the time, more, more expensive, so what, what was, what it left us with was not being able to purchase that smaller bus at that time, and now, there are more buses out there available. Of course, the money is, is still the same, it's about $14,500 short of left in that money that was approved to purchase this bus. So what we're asking now is basically, we won't have to do a budget amendment, just move money from one function to another function that will not be used, move that money into the function to purchase so, so we can purchase that bus, and that is $14,499 that we would move.
Can I get a recommendation?
Recommendation is to approve the amendment to move money from. Kevin, what functions, do you have the functions listed?
All we're requesting at this point is to, to approve using the additional money.
The function.
Well, the budget amendment that's down in, later down in the agenda, that will actually move the money from one function to another.
Okay, so we need to, need a motion to approve the spending?
Right.
Okay, so can I get a motion? Paul, second, Patty, any discussion?
Just a question in, in the bid proposal here, as I was looking at the pictures that they supplied, it says color solid, white. Are they gonna, is there, are we gonna color it yellow and put Sadeen ISD on the side of it?
We'll give it to the first graders if that thing.
Or are we gonna use the white bus?
Now, I don't know what Scott's plan is, is on that. Generally, if you buy a, a white bus, you're gonna have other painting on it, you know, but I don't really know what Scott's plan is for that particular color.
He doesn't talk to anybody about that.
So that would be an additional charge at some point.
If, if we're going, if we're going to crank that bus and just color it with additional charge, there's nothing saying that you, this is, this is going to be for an activity bus.
Oh, okay, so it's not a school.
Right, it's not a route bus.
Okay.
Yeah. It transports smaller groups, you know, tennis team, golf team, you know.
Fifteen pass here, does that still require a CDO?
Yes, that will.
Is fifteen still requiring a CDO?
The art students might want to do like a splatter project or something.
Oh, so give the art part. We got a white bus, fix it. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? In unanimous? All right, next to the budget amendment.
Okay, Kevin, if you check the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Bryce. This budget amendment is not one to increase the expenditure budget at all, won't take anything out of fund balance, it's basically recognizing revenue and expenditures for repairs that are being covered by our insurance. If you remember last August, we had some kids get into the L O L entering, do some vandalism, we received funds from the insurance company to cover the cost of that, and then we had a lightning strike that took out the lights on one of the baseball field poles, and also took out the panel on the, was it fire alarm panel or the?
Yes.
Took out the fire alarm panel, and we're still working with the insurance company to get that covered, but we're just, we're putting estimated revenue in there of $14,670, and expenditures are the same amount, and then, as Mr. Bryce mentioned a few minutes ago, the cost of the bus, $56,500, we're just moving from function 81, which is for capital improvements and renovations, to function 34, which is for transportation, so we can buy the bus and put it in the right place as far as.
But we're not moving the 56, probably moving the 14 and a half.
No, we're, we're moving the 56 from function 81 to function 34. You look on the page that has, that has the numbers on it, it's, has the budget number four at the top of it, you can see that in the, the left-hand column, you have $56,500, and then in the right-hand column, down under expenditures, you also have $56,500. So the one in the left, in the left column is reducing function 81, one in the right-hand column is increasing, which is function 34, and this is also money that we're using money from the middle school roofing project to do that.
Okay. All right, so recommendation?
To approve the budget amendment as presented.
A motion? Any second? Paul, any discussion? All in favor? In unanimous? All right, evaluation instrument.
Hey, I don't know, Andrea, do you want to talk about this?
Okay. There's nothing really to talk about.
The.
Came up the board, hopefully y'all have a chance to look at it.
This is, the committee of Andrea and Danny and Dr. Morech have put together an appraisal instrument that we're going to use, and if you remember, it was brought to you earlier, and this is just the finished product, it was just. A few other items, and this that I'm handing out now is part of it, that's just the summative part of the instrument. So the instrument that you have in your packet is the one that was presented to the board earlier that everyone was good with, and Andrea just went back to finalize some of the areas in there, so we gave it a good approval, and that's what we're going to use.
And for clarification, this is not for this year's.
This year.
Clarify, that is, we are still using the same instrument that we've used for the last several years to do this year's evaluation due to the fact of the late adoption of this document, but this will be the document that we use for next year's evaluation, so all we're doing is accepting this instrument for next year's superintendent evaluation.
That's close starting July 1.
Starting July 1. All right.
Is the discussion?
Not yet, but we're getting there. Anything else you need to?
No, I guess I should tell you, I mean, he gave me the summative, I don't know if we want to use that or not, it's just a standard form, so that's our decision if we want to use that or not, and the other one is more specified to some of the goals that we had set for, you know, that we had already approved at earlier, back in what, February?
All right, first time we did this.
So.
I think it was. So did you get it the first time?
Yeah, and this is, this is exactly what White Oaks used, all we did was plug in our goal.
Okay. Give me y'all a chance to look over this before we even make a motion, because everybody has an opportunity to look at it and kind of understands what we're looking at.
Did you pass up something else?
This was.
The other one's on the. That one's on there.
When we looked at it back a year ago, this was part of it, and that's why she said she wasn't sure if we want to use it or not, but that's kind of part of the conversation we're fixing to have. Okay, so we need a motion to accept, like, tell me what word it said.
Well, he put in here that he recommends that, Mr. Bryce recommended that the board approve the super evaluation instrument as presented.
As presented. Is this as presented? Okay, so with this.
But if, if we want to delete it, we can.
Okay, so I need a motion? Thank you for recommendation.
I'll make a motion.
All right, Paul made a motion, we get a second. And Dr. Morech, all right, discussion, let's go.
What, what changes did you make, other than just name changes in between this one? I guess you said you chose that for wine, because?
We did, but like, White Oaks was an older one, and it used not Met Standard exemplary, we don't have exemplary anymore, so we changed that. We changed that to Met Standard. The actual part, like underneath, those are our goals that we approached in February, so that's different from White Oaks.
Right.
But that first statement is just a standard deal, we just changed the word exemplary campus to Met Standard District.
Y'all have to change those things as the state.
It just needs to be a document right there for version.
This document came, I guess, I'm assuming it came from, a document from Tasby.
Tasby was the original, what we looked at was White Oaks' version of the Tasby document, she went back and got both the Tasby and the White Oaks and created this from that.
Right, I just noticed there were some changes from that Tasby document, I didn't know if we made them or.
I did, yeah, well, our team made them.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there something specifically?
There was just some stuff in parentheses on that page six B, and at the end of that first bullet point, there was some stuff on the parentheses in the Tasby document, I didn't know if there was a reason we took that out, or that, if we took it out, or if it was just.
It's on page six of seven?
Yes. And I don't even have that.
Fiscal management.
I was just asking if those, if you remembered why, if we did it or if it was already out there.
No, no, that was Kevin. Are you referring to page seven or seven?
No, six or seven.
Okay.
B was just fiscal management. And I lost, I can't find it. I just know there was a difference, and I'm just going to ask that question.
I wish I brought the original with you, but I forgot it. I couldn't get with you to.
So we are.
I can tell you that was a problem, pretty much that, like that.
It was.
Because the last ones were kind of general, and we just left them.
Yeah.
We didn't really change anything, because they didn't have anything about like our goals that were set. The others are like the superintendent priority performance.
She asked me if I wanted to include this, and I said yes, and that's why we passed it out.
Yeah, no, I like that when we saw that.
This is very general, I did nothing to it, I literally printed it out from Tasby. It's just a very general thing that you can go through and.
One other question I did have, there's a sentence, it's on page seven, Dr. Morech, and it's the last bullet point, it says, "Evidence that the superintendent's actions appropriately supported board policy and decisions with the staff and community." I just don't quite understand the wording towards the end, after, after it says, "Support board, board policy."
I'll tell you, that page just came directly from.
Well, I just, that, that. My understanding is that the, at the superintendent, "appropriately supporting the board policy and decisions when meeting with staff and community."
Are you talking about the?
The last bullet.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, if you had the word, "when meeting with the staff and community," I think you have a better understanding of what that means.
Well, the way it reads is like.
I know, it's kind of.
Support board policy.
Last one was the lieutenant.
Right here. Page seven of seven, "policy decisions with the staff and community."
Wow.
But I think what it means is, when he is with his staff, that he supports the board policy and decisions.
So do y'all want to change the wording of that?
No.
That was just a very general one, we didn't have a rule.
Yeah, I don't know how you would add with meeting or.
Well, we just, we just need to all know that we're on the same page as what that means. Unless somebody has some other interpretation of that, that's my interpretation of that, he supports board policy and decisions when meeting with staff and community. Everybody read that the same way? Any other discussion?
I do have a question, but I know we're not going to use this document, but when are we going to use the document that we do have? When is it?
When is our.
July?
It's June.
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 We do that a couple months before we do our evaluation. Oh, shoot, yeah.
I'm all strapped, yes, sir.
I, I just have, would like to make a comment, as being part of the committee, I was a little bit more involved in its development, and I have to acknowledge Andrea is doing the bulk of the work, but I did have a chance to make some comments and input on, on the documents, and having also gone through evaluations in other organizations that I'm at, we're required by law to do a superintendent evaluation, and although you try real hard to put something in paper that makes it quantifiable specifically, the reality is that it is a subjective evaluation, and there are going to be differences of opinion because of differences in our life experiences and, and other experiences, so just having said that, I look forward to it, I hope that we can come together in consensus at least, and, you know, it's kind of one of those deals where you got to follow the paper, but in your heart, you kind of know if someone's doing a good job.
Obviously, you've done this before, in, in the last 10, 12, 15 years I've been doing it, I can tell you that we've come to a consensus, but we don't always agree on how we got there, and it's generally speaking, all, you know, Andrea and I may not agree on something, Russ and I may not agree on it, but at the end of the day, we've come together that this is the evaluation that we put forward, so I think it's, it's a very, somewhat subjective in some cases, and that's why we try to make it as less subjective as possible, just so that we do have measurable things that we can look at and say, you can either do it or not, but it is tough. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, unanimous? And that brings this closed session at 7:18.